Please.
All right, the public has joined the meeting.
Okay, all right, it is 7:06 and I will call to, call to order the regular town council meeting for June 5th, 2020. Is it here? Okay, right. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilwoman Schoen. Councilwoman Gardner.
Present.
Present. Councilwoman Tulowitzki.
Presence.
Councilman Coulteritis.
Present.
Councilman or President Mellon.
Present.
And I see Ken has just joined.
I'm here.
Very good, thank you, Ken. Councilman.
All right, thank you. That brings us to, I would ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence and by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, that brings us to the 45th Street construction update. Lee with us?
Yes, can you hear me? This is Lee Randall with DILZI.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and start with the utilities, which is limited to Camelia between Southwood and Columbia. So there was a utility relocation along that, that segment. JDH was the contractor. They have placed additional topsoil and seating along those parkways last week. Walsh and Kelly has also done some curb and patching, also some paving for the town. I assume, I believe that they are expected to complete their siding this week, if not next, to have that wrapped up. Then I'll jump to Calumet Avenue. The northbound lanes are still under construction. We have one lane each direction and a southbound, excuse me, a northbound left turn lane. And there are two westbound lanes on West 45th and one eastbound. The underground storm sewer is complete within the northbound lanes of Calumet. Our grading and stone placement is ongoing. The concrete curb has been placed. They did slip forming on Saturday and they did some hand forming and pouring today. They are, will be placing some sidewalk and the drive approaches either probably next week. Because asphalt paving is expected to begin this Thursday, Friday, and potentially Monday of next week to complete that. Once they're done with that, then the lighting foundations and light will be installed and then also we'll be putting in some pavement markings to move traffic into the northbound lanes. That switch is still projected hopefully just before the 4th of July. As for East 45th and the underpass, the bottom slab forms and reinforcement installation continue. If you can see that picture there that was taken this morning, so a majority of the eastbound side is complete. They have along that far east face, all of the very, there's three rows of vertical bars that tie in. They have the back row fully installed there. The slab is projected to be poured the night of the 25th, so next Thursday night. Also, near that location are the retaining walls, so those constructions continue at wall one, which is the south end of the underpass closest to Calumet and wall three, which is on the north end of the underpass adjacent to CN. The mock-up panels along 45th Street, there's one that has been stained. So that is, is complete and that is pending town approval. And then going to acceleration, we are about 10 weeks in, estimated about 70,000 to date. We have had the prime contractor, two subcontractors working there. Most recently, of course, are the ironworkers that have been there since the end of May in a total of six weekends. So with that, if there's any questions regarding Calumet or 45th.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Randall?
No.
Okay.
Not today. Thank you, Lee.
All right, thank you.
As far as the, the panel, can a picture be shared with everyone? I mean, it doesn't have to be right the second, but.
Do it right this second if you want me to.
Oh, you can. Okay, yeah, because. So everyone can just see, see what it's looking like.
There's one.
Well.
Now remember, you'll be going by about 30 miles an hour.
Looks very nice.
That's very nice.
The left of the tail is not walking.
Very similar to what's at Centennial Park.
Yes, that was the idea. That was it.
Very nice.
And well, and then the rust color too. I know Dustin and I had spoken, I can't even remember when that was, Dustin, it may have been before the New Year. Pardon me?
2016.
Well, well, after that, we talked about the bridge, about matching the color. So this goes nicely with, if you carry the color of the ironwork that is in Centennial and you bring it over.
Onto the path, right?
Right, so.
Right.
It, it'll, looks like it'll coordinate well.
Yeah, the history and bridge that will be installed as a part of this, that will go over 45th will also be that same rust red.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that.
Very nice.
And.
Right, Lee, I think there's your permission, Mr. Randall.
All right, great, thank you.
I guess that would be. Okay, so no questions for Lee? I didn't hear any, so that will move us to the public comment section, which I would ask, Dustin, have you received any questions from the public to, to present this evening?
I did. I received an email from Mr. Nellens that was shared with Treasurer Miss. I noticed that Mr. Nellens was on the call. I don't want to steal his thunder. Dave, if you'd like me to read your email, I'd be happy to do so. But if you'd like to ask directly, maybe so also. What's your preference, sir?
I'll just let you go ahead and present it. Thank you, Dustin.
No problem, happy to do that. Here's the email. It looks like we have three questions from Mr. Nellens. One is, the Los Angeles Police Department has been called to protect our community over the they demonstrated their abilities with that concern of current staff. I trust that the council is not looking to defund our police. Number two, why is the council no longer allowed to reach out into the community to find the right candidate for a board? This ability has been in place for over 30 years. Number three is, will the council work with our local restaurants to streamline outside dining? Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, well, I, I would just like to say in response to the, to question one, we are holding an executive session with the town council and Board of Safety and just to discuss implementation of security across the town. So we are, we are in discussion about our security in town. Or we will be tomorrow night. So that, that might help with question one. Number two, I, I believe, I think as far as looking for people for boards, I know that when I speak to any residents and they show interest in being a part of, of, you know, anything in town, I encourage them to apply to any boards that would interest them. So I, we are still seeking and we, I think we all continue to seek residents who want to serve on our boards. As far as the restaurant, I believe, maybe you're referring to, I think there have been some, something in Illinois surrounding communities where they've allowed restaurants to have more seating outside, kind of to help them with the social distancing and to, to be able to serve their customers with this new social distancing. We haven't done anything that I know of, have we, Dustin? But I know we've had a lot to take care of within the town and the parks, et cetera. I don't know if any restaurants have reached out to us and asked us to allow anything?
None have so far, but I think, you know, it's certainly an idea worth exploring. Many communities have been able to do that across the country. We saw last week 313 expanding. It would be, if it's a feasible thing to do, probably well received. So we can run that out for sure.
So maybe if, I mean, because like with, normally when you expand your outdoor seating, it is a process of going through.
It's a special use.
It's a special use, so there, I don't know the answer to this. Maybe Mr. Westland does, but if there's some, there might be something that lends itself to this unusual you know, circumstance where they can't have as many people inside. So I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there for if we want to, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but.
I think it's an interesting suggestion. If restaurants, if seating at a restaurant is safer when it's outside, we might want to make a 20, 12-month exception to the current policies and allow restaurants to seat customers outside. The View seats customers outside in 313 and Marco's on Ridge Road. And the CVPA has outdoor dining, but not very many others do. And this might encourage them and some folks who might be afraid to eat in a restaurant even now might be willing to eat outside because it's considered safer than being inside.
I, that's true. And we did do the temporary lift of the sign ordinance so that our local businesses could communicate with residents without incurring extra expenses. So that was something that we did to accommodate businesses during this, you know, unusual time. So. Okay, well, I guess.
David, do you have suggestions?
Well, Dustin is right, it's a special use, so yeah, we'd have to look at, you know, whether we could temporarily suspend that. I still think, you know, I, I'd want to think about it because, you know, there are some restaurants that have more room than other restaurants to do that, right?
Sure.
I think it's a good idea, but then how do you, if you universally suspend it across the board, how do you control when it's not a great idea in, in some, you know, in some instances? So I guess I'd want to take a look at it. It's the first time I've heard this suggestion. I think it's a good suggestion. I just want to be able to make sure we can consistently apply it, number one. And, and number two, that we kind of know what we're getting ourselves into.
All right. Thank you. Dustin, do we have any other questions from the public?
No.
No, we did not. Okay, thank you. That will move us to the consent agenda.
I move, we accept.
Go ahead.
I move, we accept the consent agenda.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Counselor Schoen made the motion. It was seconded by Counselor Coulteritis. Counselor Schoen, how do you vote?
Present, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Coulteritis?
Yes.
President Mellon?
Yes.
I've never been first before.
You're, you're Ward one tonight, so we're going in Ward order tonight.
Already.
Shaking things up a bit.
All right, thank you, Wendy. And let's see, that brings us down to Old Business, wait, did I miss something? Yeah, Old Business Ordinance 1794 defining the nominating committee.
All right, this is the second time, it's up for second reading. It was originally brought before council on March 2nd. The nominating committee has been around, it's a home rule committee, it's unique to Munster. And the regulations, the, the guidelines that we had been using were so old that we didn't even have them on a computer. So this document had to be retyped. Since this was published, tonight's agenda was a publish, I did receive some revisions that were submitted. And they, they were discussed and offered up at the March 2nd meeting. And just to summarize or go over what they are is, in section B, the makeup of the nominating committee would be at least one and no more than three members from each municipal voting ward. Number B would be no more than five members who are elected to take a ballot from the Democratic Party in the last primary election. C, no more than five members who elected to take a ballot from the Republican Party. And then a little bit about the makeup of the, of the committee, which would be at least three men, at least three women, at least three persons who identify of color, at least three persons who do not identify of color, at least three persons under the age of 50, and at least three persons over the age of 49. Additionally, there are a few, as I said, it had to be retyped. So in number D, there's a typing correction in number two, no becomes known. In E, under one, there becomes they, in applicants, there's an extra space. And then in number three, that's D, E3, statement should be statements. So we bring this before you for second reading by motion and roll call to adopt the ordinance.
Madam President, I would just like to clarify so that there's no misunderstanding in the public or on the council that one person could meet three of those qualifications. For instance, if you had a Latino woman who was, obviously she'd either be under the age of 49, under 50 or over 49. And so she, one person could meet three of those requirements. Otherwise, it would be, and would probably be either a Democrat or a Republican, so let's say four requirements. So it's not as limiting and as difficult to fill as I think it was originally thought to be.
Ken, I don't think that's in the sexy ordinance, though. Those were suggestions that were brought up at that meeting on March 2nd.
I believe they were brought up as an amendment to the ordinance.
They weren't as an amendment, they're corrections, changes to the amendment as it was originally presented.
But we have not, none of us have seen this in writing, nor did, Mr. Westland, have you reviewed this? I think that was the point of those changes being sent to you to begin with. That's what I recall from the meeting in March.
I think you're on mute, Dave. Mr. Westland.
All right, sorry. So let's, I, I just want to back up to the procedural history a little bit. Ordinance 1794 is in your packet and it's online. That version was approved at first reading. And then, I believe Counselor Tulowitzki offered some, some changes, some things that he would like to see added to the ordinance, but the ordinance that was approved on first reading didn't have those additions in there. And at the time, particularly with regard to what was sent out in the last, you know, 24 hours, item 4D, which is kind of the makeup of, of the, of the, of the, of the committee. And, and Mr. Tulowitzki and I talked about this today, I haven't had a, a chance to, to get a legal opinion on whether or not you can drill down quite that far into those sorts of qualifications. So right now, the ordinance that was approved on first reading doesn't have any of Mr. Tulowitzki's proposed changes. And I'm, I'm not prepared to offer an opinion with regard to item 4D of, of the proposed changes that you have. So we need to, procedurally, if you're going, you could do a couple of different things. Number one, you could table this item to further discuss those recommendations. Number two, you could approve the ordinance as originally approved at first reading. So those are the, your kind of two extremes. Number three, if someone made a motion to approve the ordinance 1794 on second reading, that would be as it was approved on first reading. And then any counselor would have the ability to propose an amendment at that time, which would be voted on separately. If the amendment passes, then you'd be voting on second reading with the ordinance as amended. If it doesn't pass, then you'd be voting on the ordinance as it exists now.
May I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Westland? Item 4D is the one that has, that is legally uncertain. Is there any language that you can think of that would allow that to be a suggestion rather than a requirement?
Well.
Clear out the legal issue?
Yeah, so certainly, and, and so here's kind of my off the cuff, thinking about it for a day sort of comment. I'm not sure that identifying people as people of color or people who do not identify as people of color, I'm not, I'm not really sure that that's the accurate vernacular. That's number one. Number two, the ADA, the, the age limitation is typically 40. And, and, and the suggestion kind of chooses 50. So, or not the, the Americans, the Age Discrimination Act talks about 40 being the cutoff, not 50. So those two things, you know, but in answer to your specific question, could there be an aspirational statement added to the end of any ordinance that says, you know, we strive for blah, 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 blah? Certainly that, you know, it would not be binding in any regard, but it would be kind of an aspirational statement. You could also have that as your policy without it being in the ordinance. Right? So, so yeah, those are options. But I don't, I can't tell you legally whether that would hold. My, my thinking is it would not hold up and I would not be comfortable passing it with that mandatory language in there.
In two weeks, would you have a better suggestion for us? Better, better description of the legalities?
I certainly could.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
We discussed this back early part of March and it's been on the so-called parking lot of the, of the agenda Trello thing that, that the council gets to see. Why are we just hearing about these amendments now or these changes now? It was discussed at the March 2nd meeting. I believe that was going to get reviewed by the, you know, the Counselor Tulowitzki mentioned that he was going to forward that along to Attorney Westland. Why are we just hearing about these changes now and, and we haven't had the time to have these reviewed?
I was under the impression that because this, these, this wasn't any central business of the council that we had to delay any action on it until we were meeting in person again. But apparently I was, I was mistaken, but I didn't miss it in April and May because of that reason.
It was, it was discussed on March 2nd. I think Counselor Coulteritis was not originally going to be present on the March 16th meeting, so he had requested that it would be moved to April 6th, the second reading. March 16th didn't happen because of the governor's ordinance. Things got very chaotic in the meantime. It wasn't brought up at either of the March meetings. It wasn't added to the agenda on either of the May meetings. And I only saw last night when I returned home that it was on the meeting, on the calendar for this meeting. I didn't receive any requests for the suggested information. I hadn't sent it out on time. So at the moment I saw that, I forwarded to Clerk Treasurer Miss and Town Attorney Westland the suggested changes about, which was 11:00 PM last night.
Madam President, can I move that we table this until our first meeting in July?
You can make, you, anyone can make a motion. You can make a motion for that.
Let me reword it. I, I move that we table the discussion and decision on this until our first meeting in July.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion on tabling it? No.
I, I think this is an important issue that we need to find this nominating committee to get this thing moving so we can hire, or so we can at least discuss the Board of Safety opening. How, I, I think the other thing is we, I think a number of us made announcements that when we were first put on the council about additional people being, you know, filling out applications and, and filling out information for the board positions. And to my knowledge, again, we've had some people apply in the, in the recent weeks. But again, we still are dealing with probably since January, maybe six to seven people that have applied for positions. And I, I do think just putting this off for another couple of weeks doesn't get us anything. I, I think we need to get these positions filled.
Yeah, we've had our, the, the issue at hand is that we have had a Board of Safety position open now for, for almost, for over three months possibly. And when this was brought up at the March 2nd meeting, we did say, okay, we will take some time to, to have Mr. Tulowitzki forward his suggestions to Mr. Westland. But I think we made, we stated in that meeting that we could not, you know, we didn't want to make it, we, we were like debating whether or not we could wait that long at that time. So, I mean, we need to fill this Board of Safety position and after a nominating committee is formed, it then takes a little bit of time for them to arrange the interviews and to recommend. So you're not just talking about to July, the July meeting, you're talking then actually another month before that, that action can be taken to fill the vacancy.
Madam President, I move for a vote.
Okay, Wendy, will you please call the vote?
So.
May I make one comment? Another comment?
We're called, what, go ahead.
No, I totally agree that the Board of Safety is very important. If we use the nominating committee to fill that, we should move it. I liked Attorney Westland's suggestion of adding a, how did you put it? A statement, an aspirational statement at the end of the ordinance for item 4D. Since that seems to be the one that has, that is creating some issues, so I would be willing, or I would like to see the, the, the vote cover the other amendments with that statement moved to the end.
Currently, we have a motion on the floor to table this until the July meeting, so we need to take a vote on that motion. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
I have Counselor Schoen making the motion. It was seconded by Counselor.
I have Counselor Schoon making the motion. It was seconded by Counselor Tulowitzki. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
No.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
No.
Counselor Mellon?
No.
I have three to two, two voting yes, three no on tabling the, the vote on the second reading on ordinance 1794.
Madam, Madam President, I move that we adopt ordinance 1794 on second reading as presented.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Madam President, I would like to move to amend the original ordinance as indicated by Mr. Westland. Moving item 4D from the proposed language to the end of the ordinance as an aspirational statement, and then incorporating the other changes to item 4A, B, and C as Clerk Treasurer Miss has read at the beginning of this discussion.
Okay, Mr., is there any other discussion?
I second the amendment.
Okay, well.
There is no second. There's just discussion right now, Ken.
Yeah.
Amendment requires a second.
Yeah.
Right. I want to.
I would, I would actually have to approve or actually alter my motion to acknowledge the amendment at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Westland?
No. So typically when, we're doing the right most of the time. But in this instance, because we got into discussion, there's a motion to amend. Now that motion to amend needs a second. And so now you're technically into discussion on the amendment only.
Gotcha. Thank you for the clarification.
There'll be a vote on the amendment only after your discussion.
Okay, so, Mr. Westland, can I, so just to clarify, because we, we rarely get involved in multiple motions and so first we are going to Mr. Schoon, second, the, the motion that had that's dealt with the amendment to the, to Mr. Kulturitis' motion. So first we'll, after discussion on the, the motion to amend, Mr. Kulturitis, or to add the amendment, we will vote on that amendment by itself. Is that correct?
That's correct. So you'll have discussion now on the amendment. Then you'll take a vote on the amendment. If the amendment doesn't pass, then you can either have further discussion and potential amendment, or you can vote on the original motion, which was Dr. Kulturitis' motion. If the amendment passes, then you have to vote on the ordinance now as amended.
Okay.
So the first thing you got to take up is what Counselor Tulowitzki proposed as his amendment.
Okay. So we do have Mr. Schoon, or Counselor Schoon, you wanted to, you seconded the motion. Is that what I heard?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the proposed amendment to the exist, to 1794 as it exists and was approved at the first reading. Is there any discussion?
Are we discussing the amendment? Or we just, no, we're discussing the amendment, correct?
This is the amendment that we have not seen in writing.
Right.
That was emailed to Wendy last night and Attorney Westland at 11 o'clock last night. Is that, that's the amendment that we're talking about here?
Also, yes. Also, which Wendy has read at the beginning of this call. It was not posted in the, it was not posted in the, in the meeting minutes or in the agenda items on, online today. Although it could have been. I'm happy to reread it if there are questions for clarification. And I would just say the, the intent of it is, we are in the midst of several unprecedented crises. And one of them is about inclusion, diversity, and representative government. This is an opportunity using the formation of the nominating committee to put in some language that says, we're doing our best as the town of Munster to get that incorporated. The nominating committee itself is rather important because it is the body that interviews and makes recommendations to the council about who should serve in our government. So the diversity on the nominating committee means we'll have diversity of opinion in who fills the other positions within our government. Currently, we've got a council with 60% new counselors. That's Counselor Gardner, Counselor Schoon, and myself. And there have been zero changes to any of our bodies of government, commissions, boards, committees. This is the one that has nine members, all of whose terms expired at the beginning of our council. There was something added online today after I sent at 11:00 PM last night. And that was an additional memo that I suppose we'll get to, listing the current members who have said that they want to, you know, serve again. If that's also approved, that means we've got, one person doesn't want to run again for, for whatever reason it looks like. We've in effect got a nominating committee that was appointed by, only by, not by 60% of our elected officials right now. That's what the purpose of this amendment is. Also, if you look as a matter of public record of the nine people currently serving, there are one who elected to, to vote in the Democratic Party and eight who did not, who elected to vote in the Republican Party. And I think that's, seems like that's what could be a part of the core of this. So this is just an opportunity to say that we should not have a situation where we have a super majority. But you can of course have a majority in, in this position. And this committee is in particular important to the point that Resident Nellens made at the beginning. Hey, why aren't we advertising? Why aren't we getting more actively involved in getting people who are in town who like to serve in these things? I, I think our process is not, is not as modern as it could be, since we had to type this from a handwritten or typewriter written note in 1984. And if I would apply for a position, if I were running any of these commissions as a company, I would want to have as many people as possible apply who are interested and be able to look at and select the, the best qualified candidate with the best qualified set of people making the decision. So that's the intent of the amendment that I've made, is to bring more balance. And I agree that, that the 4D might be challenging legally for a number of reasons. And so I would be okay with moving that to an aspirational statement at the end of the ordinance.
Counselor Tulowitzki, you mentioned that the core are, this nominating committee are Republicans. Are you trying to say that because Republican, we actually had a problem on this committee? Because I could have sworn that we've been electing people onto the nominating committee as they were interested in the position. I want to have the best people on the nominating committee. And not everybody wants to partake in being part of the town. Some people are busy running their lives. And if we can get enough people that are interested in it, then they need to show up to some of these meetings so we can see who they are so that we can see if they actually can fit our, our, their role in, in these various committees. So I really take offense to you saying the core of that group is Republican right now. There's just one Democrat. So at this point, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of moving forward with, with these suggestions that you have made tonight. That's just my opinion, sir.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
Anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Mr. Westland does his hand up.
Mr. Westland.
I, I just want to clarify, Mr. Tulowitzki's amendment, because I don't, I want to, I want to make sure I got this. So your motion to amend was all the changes Wendy read, except this item 4D, which you wanted to make an aspirational statement at the bottom, which I would propose the language you'd want me to work out, something along the lines of the town of Munster will utilize best efforts to appoint blah, 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 blah.
Yeah. And, and Dave, that, that could be just simply a, a balance of sex, origin, and age.
Okay. And I just want to make sure we're all, I want to make sure I got it. Because to just drop this to the end, it'd have to go kind of before G. And we could, yeah, I mean, obviously I can do it. But I just want to make sure I know what I've.
Yeah.
Pass, if this passes.
And I'd like to respond to Counselor Kulturitis. I, I'm not saying that there have been any bad decisions made or anything like that. Simply when we, if we would implement item 4A, B, and C, as Wendy read, item 4A is at least one and no more than three members from each municipal voting ward within the town of Munster. That's the same as it is today. There's no, literally no change for that. Item B is no more than five members who elected to take a ballot from the Democratic Party in the last primary election in which they voted. And number C, or letter C, is no more than five members who elected to take a ballot from the Republican Party in the last primary election in which they voted. It simply brings balance, brings political balance to the nominating committee. And this is the one committee which seems to be designed to be selected by the council each time there's a new council. And we have a significantly new council today. And I think it's the responsible thing to do, to have a balanced committee in here. Regardless of what has happened in the past, I'm not saying there have been any bad decisions made in the, in the past. I'm just saying we have an opportunity to change today.
Okay. I think I'll take another comment from, does another counselor have something to say? All right. I think it's, I'm going to call for the vote. At this time, we are, we have a motion and a second to vote on the amendment. Dave, please help me if I'm not stating this correctly, because I don't want to mislead anyone in my statement. So that everyone is clear upon which they are, on what they are voting.
So, yeah. So this first roll call vote is going to be on the amendment proposed by Counselor Tulowitzki.
All right. Thank you. Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Certainly. And I have Counselors Tulowitzki made the motion and, oh, Counselor Schoon made the second on the, made the motion.
Mr. Schoon made the motion.
No.
No.
The amendment.
For the amendment, I have, I have Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Schoon. And the amendment is as present the revised provision without 4D. And Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
No.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
No.
Counselor Mellon? President Mellon?
No.
I have four, three no's and two yeses on the amendment.
Okay, so now we still have, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, Mr. Westland, we'll have the original motion made by, I believe, Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Gardner to, to accept ordinance 1794 on second reading as it is presented, which is the version that was presented and passed on first reading at the March 2 meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Does it have the, Wendy, does it have the, some of the syntax errors that were brought up at that meeting?
Yes, it does have the syntax errors in the form. So.
So it's not exactly what was approved at the March 2 meeting?
Well, no, it, it is the same one. We would have to go through the same process again to amend it, to fix the syntax errors in D2, E1, and E3.
Well, I'm going to, Mr. Westland, since these were just, those were just matters of typos basically.
Yeah, they didn't change the meaning at all.
No, it didn't change the meaning. So amendment, is, is that necessary, Mr. Westland? Just change to?
I mean, we, typically I would say no, but we've kind of gone down a different road here. So I would, I would think for purposes of the record, if Wendy could read those syntax errors that she wants changed, and someone could make that motion and second, and that could get passed, then that would probably make the record more clear.
Okay. Wendy, do you mind going through those?
I don't. Couple. All right. Under D, it says the committee is to make it no instead of known. So we would change the no to known. In E, the sentence reads, all meetings are considered executive sessions to the extent there, it should be they are. And then it looks as though there may be just, I'm not sure if there's a missing capital or something, but it's underlined in the version that I have. So I would make whatever that adjustment would be. And then same thing, E3, it says, any requirements for statement, it should be statements to the press, will be referred to the town council. So those are the four that I've identified as true syntax errors.
I, I think there was also something on item 5. There were some changes to the syntax. Not so much a typo, but I think you had made some suggestions there.
Exactly. So if we want to go with the changes such as that, then we talk about in B4, it says the makeup of, we're talking in an effort to provide as diverse committee makeup as possible, the membership of the committee. It was originally written as may and the recommended change is shall. And then in 5, the original wording is while a member of the committee, while a member of the committee, no member shall hold any other elective or appointive office, including but not exclusively that is in any way related to the town of Munster or its competent parts or divisions. And the revision is while a member of the committee, no person shall hold any elective or other appointive office with the town of Munster, nor have any relationship, including but not exclusively, a financial stake or contract that is in any way related to the town of Munster. Item number 7 says the town council president shall serve as an ex officiano member of the committee. And then there's an addition here of the president shall serve as a non-voting member. In C2, there's the otherwise, it says all incumbent members of boards, commissions, and committees are to be considered as applicants for reappointment unless otherwise directed by, and then this is the addition, member him or herself or the town council. And I believe that is, that is a complete reading of the nuanced changes. That those go beyond typographical. Those are a little more like adding the financial stake, may and shall changes the meaning of that.
Mr. Westland, does that alter this ordinance at all, what Wendy just described?
No, I don't think substantively it does.
Okay. I move for a vote.
I, I would, before that, I would move that we accept the amendments as presented by Clerk Treasurer Miss into this most, ordinance 1794.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these changes? All right. Wendy, will you please call the vote?
Certainly. I have Councilman Gardner making the motion. It's seconded by Counselor Kulturitis. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner, how do you vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki, how do you vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis, how do you vote on the amendment?
Yes.
And President Mellon, how do you vote? Yes. So the amended changes pass 5 to 0.
All right. And so 4 now becomes part of the 1794 version that was. All right, and so the four now become part of the seventeen ninety-four version that was read on, was at a first reading at March second and passed, and that has now been moved to be adopted on second read. Is that correct, Mr. Westlin? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I, we will call for a vote on, we have a motion by, that was Mr. Kultritis, correct?
Yes, seconded by Counselor Gardner.
All right, Wendy, can you please call the vote?
All right, this is the vote on ordinance seventeen ninety-four. Councilman Schoon?
No.
Councilman Gardner?
Yes.
Councilman Tulowitzki?
No.
Councilman Kultritis?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes.
I, the motion is passed three to two.
Right, thank you. That will move us to the next order of business, which is, I am not seeing it here, let's see. Revision number four.
Madam President, I would ask that we reappoint the above mentioned, the, the above mentioned members. The eight, or the seven returning members of, or the eight returning members that have expressed interest in serving on the nominating committee. Names of David Alonso, Marcia Horak, Jim Casper, Jill Miller, Andy Quinell, Leonard Walalovich, Terry Wilson, and Christopher Elo. I motion, we reappoint those above mentioned members to the nominating committee.
I second it.
Here we have a motion and a second.
That's not on the agenda. How are we doing this?
There is a memo on this. It is, I just missed it. I didn't have it in front of me, but there is a memo. It says memo, and then it says ordinance seventeen ninety-four, and it says another memo. Reaction.
Okay.
Yes, Ken. Yeah.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Have any discussion?
I'll just reiterate that these are, these are very likely, very fine folks. They're residents from the town. They're simply not, they have not been selected by this council.
They will be now.
And I know nothing about them. How can I? How can I say yes or no?
Well, we all have a vote, so is there, are there any other discussions? Okay, Wendy, can you please call?
I, I will. I'm just making some notes. My apologies. On the appointments, we have Councilman Gardner making the motion to accept the reappointment of the exist, the eight existing members. It was seconded by Councilman Kultritis. Councilman Schoon, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Gardner?
Yes.
Councilman Tulowitzki?
No.
Councilman Kultritis?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes.
All right, it's three to two to reappoint the previous nominating committee members.
All right, and upon that, we, we will need to direct them to review the applicants that we have received for the Board of Safety, so that we can have them interview those applicants, and then hopefully be able to recommend, make recommendations for our first meeting in July, so that we can fill that vacancy.
Making a note of that, so.
Thank you.
And the council receive a list of the applicants for the Board of Safety?
I have not sent it, no. Would you like it, Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will send it to all.
Along with that, then there are, there's one position to be filled on the nominating commission, or nominating committee, so if you could forward those as well, that's not something that we would have wanted to, to, to have attached to this, because we would have made all those applicants' personal information public record by doing so. So we will have those.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And that moves us to the, where is it? Okay, to the revision number four, utility billing regulations.
Tricia, would you like to take this one?
Sure.
Okay.
About ten years ago, the council made a change to the utility billing policy that made the landlords responsible for their utility bills. This year, in the most recent session of the General Assembly, there was a new law passed that in essence prohibits doing that. So what we, we are needing to do is bring all of our rules and regulations into compliance. We are switching over all the accounts, changing, moving over deposits, doing final bills to move all of the landlord accounts, close those out, open up accounts for all the renters, have new service agreements signed, and our utility billing rules and regulations, the formal document that we follow and that we provide to every new resident, that needs to be updated so that it comes into compliance with the law. That's what's happening here. We are also taking the opportunity to make a few other minor changes, the things that are more clerical in nature. The one that's easy to see is we will no longer call the hydrant rental fee hydrant rental. It's confusing. People think that they're renting a fire hydrant, and they get upset they don't have a fire hydrant in front of their house, when really it's more accurately called a hydrant maintenance fee. We have spoken with our representatives from Baker Tilly about this, and that's a common practice, and it's seen as an acceptable change to the terminology. So what we're looking for is a vote to approve this revision of the utility billing rules and regulations.
I would make a motion that we accept this utility bill policy as presented by Ms. Abbott.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I have a question. Trish, in regard, you, you mentioned that tenants actually have to put down a deposit. You know by chance what is the deposit that they have to put down?
It depends on the meter size of where they're living. It's usually a hundred dollars. For those tenants that we have, we have some tenants that are currently on ACH. We can document that they have been paying their bills on time. For those, we are waiving the deposit because that fits with the other policies that we have in place, and we are trying to work with people, giving them a little more time to make that deposit.
Okay, thank you, Trish. I have no further questions.
This deposit, Trish, is in addition to a deposit that they pay to the landlord for, you know, covering a couple of months' rent.
Correct. This would be strictly for the water bill. It's the same deposit amount that a homeowner would pay.
Very good. Thanks.
And they can get it refunded after twelve on-time payments.
Oh. Which means after three or four years, they can skip town, and we'd have no recourse.
Yes. But most of our, our experience has been that if you get those twelve months, you're not someone who's going to skip on us.
Okay.
Most people.
You know that better than I do.
Section. Section one point one lays out the deposit amounts, page one of seven. Seems to be a hundred dollars for the five eights or three-quarter inch meter.
I have no further questions.
Um, okay, Wendy, can you please call the vote?
Certainly. Councilman Gardner, he motioned to accept the revisions. It was seconded by Counselor Tulowitzki. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
He, Counselor Schoon votes yes. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. Counselor Kultritis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kultritis votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Yes, Council, President Mellon votes yes. That's five to zero to accept the recommended revisions to the utility billing policies, rules, and regulations.
Thank you. All right, turns up to surf, ordinance seventeen ninety-eight, surplus bond proceeds.
Seventeen ninety-eight and seventeen ninety-nine are very similar. And Tricia, if you wouldn't mind taking the lead on this and explaining a little bit how, what, what were you asking for here?
Yes. So each year, council issues a general obligation and a park bond. When those bonds are issued, there's an amortization schedule, which is the repayment plan. That document gets sent to, down to the state, to the Department of Local Government Finance, and they use it to determine what tax levy we will get and what appropriations we will get to make those debt payments in the coming year. And we did that as we were supposed to in two thousand nineteen, and a couple of weeks ago, it was discovered that both of those amortization schedules were incorrect. So the amounts that we were given authority to spend and to levy will not be enough to cover the debt service payments. We have a very strong feeling about this, that we will always meet our debt service obligations. And so the first thing we're going to do is, this in ordinance seventeen ninety-eight, we're going, we're asking that some of the old bond proceeds from the issuance, issues that happened in two thousand fifteen be declared surplus. With a municipal bond, we need eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Council has the authority to declare that surplus, transfer those dollars into the debt service fund. Once they're in the debt service fund, we can make those debt service payments. We're asking the park board to take a similar action for twelve thousand dollars. They will adopt a resolution. Once that's adopted, it will come to you as the council to approve, to give the final approval on that, where then, then these dollars could be transferred into their debt service fund. That's what ordinance seventeen ninety-eight is doing. It's the actual transfer of the cash from the proceeds funds into the debt service funds. The next ordinance will be to issue an additional appropriation, which we can get into once you've had a chance to discuss this.
Madam President, I would make, make a motion that we hear ordinance seventeen ninety-eight on first reading and schedule second reading for the next regular meeting in July.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
My question, Ms. Abbott, is do we know where the, do we know why the error was made, and have we resolved that going forward?
Yes, we have figured out what happened, and it's only going to be an issue for this year because I have now talked, spoken with the LGF, talked with our field rep. I have gone in and made all the necessary changes so that the debt service payments moving forward, starting in two thousand twenty-one, we're, will be right on target for. It's just this year's payments that we have the issue with, and we may in fact be able to go back and find, you know, to get the tax dollars to cover those debt service payments, but that would be down the line.
Okay, so this is actually tax dollars that we could have collected.
Yes.
And will do so in, in coming years. And the amount here is eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Sounds like, yeah. Oh, and the next, the next ordinance is, is, is the next number?
The, the next ordinance will talk about doing an additional appropriation. The park number, council needs to wait until the park board takes their action. First, they declare it surplus, then it comes to you, and then as council, you have that final approval.
And do you know what number that is? Is it in the same ballpark?
Twelve thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call, call for the vote?
Certainly. I show that Councilman Gardner made the motion. It was seconded by Councilman Kultritis to accept seventeen ninety-eight on first read. Councilman Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Schoon votes yes. Councilman Gardner?
Yes.
Councilman Gardner votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. Counselor Kultritis?
Yes.
Counselor Kultritis votes yes. President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. That's five to zero on, accepting ordinance seventeen ninety-eight on first read.
Okay, that takes us to ordinance seventeen ninety-nine, which you have indicated is similar to seventeen ninety-eight.
It's related to it. So once the transfer of the cash happens from one fund to the other, we need to have the authority to spend, which is what appropriations are. So we're beginning the process of, of requesting an additional appropriation, which is going to require adopting an ordinance, which is seventeen ninety-nine, and holding a public hearing. At that point, I'm trying to find the actual ordinance this year. Yeah. Be four funds that we're going to go for an additional appropriation on, the two debt service funds. Since we're going through the process, going through, putting in an advertisement, having a public hearing, we make a point of looking at all the funds to see if there's any other funds that would need and are eligible for an additional appropriation. And we did find two other funds. One is the electric fund. That's the revenues that are generated from the methane generator, and that energy is sold to NIPSCO. Last year, when the budget was put together, the generator was not producing much. It was in need of some significant repairs, and revenues were pretty low, and we were very conservative in our projections. Now that that work has been done, the, the revenues are coming in better, and so we're asking for an additional appropriation. Those funds are used to pay for streetlights and for the electricity at various parks. The last fund is the sewer maintenance fund. It's, it's one that has been, over the last several years, had been struggling, then there was the rate increase, and we're now starting to see those revenues come in, and so we're asking to have an additional appropriation there as well.
Is there a motion?
I will, go ahead, Council.
I will move to hear proposed ordinance seventeen ninety-nine for additional appropriations on first reading and schedule second reading and a public hearing for July sixth, two thousand twenty.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions?
Yeah, my question is for the sewer maintenance. It's a quarter million dollars, the additional appropriation. Where does, where do, where does that money come from?
So it's, when you go through the budget process, you're actually looking at eighteen months. And so you're, you're, you're assuming that you're going to spend all of your budget dollars for this budget year. We would have assumed we spend every budget dollar in two thousand nineteen, which reduces your cash balance that you're estimating for the end of two thousand nineteen, and that's what you're basing your two thousand twenty budget on. So now we come into two thousand twenty, we didn't spend every penny out of the sewer fund in two thousand nineteen. There's more cash there to begin with, and our revenues are coming in at a steady predictable rate.
Okay, so this is cash that already exists, and we're just appropriating it so that we can spend it out this year.
Cash that exists and revenues that we know are going to be coming in.
Right. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Certainly. I show Councilman Tulowitzki made the motion. It was seconded by Counselor Kultritis. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Schoon votes yes. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. Counselor Kultritis?
Yes.
Counselor Kultritis votes yes. President Mellon?
Yes.
Yes, that's five to zero. We will read the, on second read, present this on second reading, July sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that brings us to this street improvement bid.
Yes. This is the next step in the street resurfacing for Harrison, Holman, and Margot Lane. We had bids come in July third. Two firms bid with us. It were Reeve Riley and Walton Kelly. While in the second paragraph of the memo, the numbers might pop up, you know, Walton Kelly has the lower number. However, they did not respond to an addendum that they were sent in their bid package, which means they did not, that's a price for the commodities that we, which means Riley is the lowest responsible responsive bidder for a total construction cost of one million one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Some of that is reimbursable. In fact, four hundred and fifty-three thousand seven dollars will be reimbursable by the state. In one more item, or if you wanted to change the agenda, you'll see a OPA agreement from Indat saying that we have the matching grant of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is because the difference between that four fifty-three and the five hundred number is because the bids came in lower than what we had predicted. Unfortunately, the way the state manages these grant funds, we don't get to keep that extra hundred thousand dollars and like, put it to another road if we can match it. It's specifically for these three projects within the agreed upon limits of construction. But still, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a is a good match from the state. And it's also good news that we came in lower than the engineer's estimate. So with this item here, we are looking for a motion and a second to authorize the town of Munster to engage with Reeve Riley for the two thousand twenty part one funding for a street resurfacing.
So moved.
Okay. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Certainly. Councilman Kulturitis made the motion. It was seconded by Councilman Tulowitzki. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Schoon voted yes. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner voted yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki voted yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Voted yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mellon voted yes. That's five to zero to engage Ruth Riley.
Right.
President Mellon, if you would like to just be done with this particular topic, you could amend the order of the agenda and consider the local roads and bridges matching grant agreement.
Okay.
This is a piece of boilerplate language that comes from Indat that allows the town to receive those funds for the the state portion of that construction project.
Okay, Mr. Watson, can I amend this? Or do I need to do this through a vote to amend?
No, you can go, you can drop down to it.
Okay, all right. Yes, then go ahead, Dustin. Let's.
Yes, as you can see, the 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 grant agreement amount is five hundred and fifty-four thousand, which is more than what the state will end up paying if that comes in as spec by the contractor. What we need here is a motion and a second to enter into an agreement or to accept the agreement. There's a use variance between the town of Munster and the Indiana Department of Transportation for contract number A two four nine two zero L G two zero zero one eight six.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion?
Dustin, if they come in a little bit higher than the the number that was quoted in the last one, can we, will we still get the portion of this?
Yes, so long as it's a reimbursable expense.
Yeah.
You'll note that the four hundred and fifty thousand is not half of the one lane, because there are other expenses in that project that are not reimbursable by Indat. But if it is a reimbursable expense, we can reimburse up to the five hundred and fifty-four thousand seven dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify that, that's if there's a change order, so to speak, with something like that, that has to do with actually the road, not the sewer project part of it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion as second. Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Certainly. I have Counselor Tulowitzki making the motion to accept the grant, seconded by Counselor Gardner. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel, President Mellon?
Yes.
Yes. That's five to zero to accept the grant.
Okay, and then that will take us to, we will move back up to the use variance.
We have a special guest star tuned in right now, Town Planner Tom Vanderwood.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that introduction. I'm presenting here a request from Big Star Developments LLC and a recommendation from the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve a use variance to permit a single-family residential use in a CD four A general urban A character district located at eighty-three nineteen Jackson Street. This is a piece of property that was purchased by Big Star Developments LLC last year. It is actually two lots that were combined into one at one point. Contains two residential structures, so two what appear to be homes, but they were actually used most recently as a convent. And the petitioners or the applicants bought the property and discovered that the property does not permit them to rehab and use the properties or use the buildings as single-family homes. The property is located in a CD four A district, as I mentioned, in this district. And you have a report that kind of shows you where the property is, but it's located about a half a block south of Ridge Road on Jackson Avenue. And this property is zone CD four, which is a mixed-use district, so it doesn't permit single-family homes. It does permit residential uses, but only on second, third, and fourth floors. So there's a restriction on it that says the ground floor has to be a commercial use. Big Star Developments presented this to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which held a public hearing on June ninth. The board voted four to zero to forward a favorable recommendation to approve this. That recommendation goes to the council for actual approval of the use variance. The the board, in making that recommendation, asked that a condition be placed on it, and this was a condition that was actually suggested by the applicant. And the condition is this, that they would, although they would be permitted to use the property as a single-family home, they would be treated as a legal non-conforming use. So in other words, they would be made similar to the other single-family homes in the neighborhood, which are, like I said, legal non-conforming. There's some text here in the staff report down kind of the bottom third of the page there that shows the four events that would, if this property was made to be legal non-conforming, these four events would trigger the sort of loss of that legal non-conforming status. And the CD four zoning would be put back in place, in a sense. And it boils down to if the property is destroyed, if it changes use, if it's vacant for a year, or if the building is removed. So they're asking that that condition be applied to the, to any approval that may be made this evening. And then I've also included in my memo the the criteria that is to be considered when granting a use variance. I won't read that verbatim for you, but it is there. There's some, the unique thing about a use variance, in addition to the fact that it has to be approved by the town council rather than the Board of Zoning Appeals, is that it does say that there's a requirement that there would be a finding of an unnecessary hardship for the property. So that being said, I'm forwarding on this recommendation from the from the Board of Zoning Appeals. I will take any questions if there are any.
Well, Tom, what is the unnecessary hardship in this case?
Well, I think the the applicant said that a commercial use in this location would not be economically viable. Yeah, Dustin's kind of, if you take a look at your screen there, you can see that that out that block outlined in red and labeled commercial, that's the Ridge Road. The businesses that front on Ridge Road. And then eighty-three nineteen is the subject property. There are essentially all single-family rentals and owner-occupied single-family in that neighborhood. There is, their contention was that, as I said, being off of Ridge Road would not permit them to have a viable commercial ground floor.
And this property lost its legal non-compliance status because it was vacant, whereas the other properties surrounding that were not.
That is correct. Yeah, it was vacant for over a year, so it lost that status.
And that would happen again if they, is for some reason vacant, it would go back to CD four A.
That is the condition that they have agreed to and that the Board of Zoning Appeals is recommending.
Thank you. Do they know who is, is it going to be a rental, or will it, do they have tenants for this already?
They did not answer that. They didn't say one way or the other. I can tell you that while we can regulate the use of the property in terms of whether or not it's commercial, residential, multifamily residential, and so on, we can't regulate whether or not it's a rental or owner-occupied building.
Yeah, no, I guess I was just curious if they had someone ready to move in, or if it was going to stay vacant.
Not to my knowledge, because they have not begun any sort of rehabilitation.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilors?
I would move that we accept the use, use variance to permit a single-family residence use in CD four A at eighty-three nineteen Jackson Street with the criteria that's included in the board packet.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Gardner made the motion. It was seconded by Counselor Kulturitis. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote? Counselor Schoon? Counselor?
Yeah, I'm muted.
I'll circle back. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki voted yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
We still don't hear you for some reason.
Yeah, I sure he's not muted, so.
Is it thumbs up or down?
Do you see him? Let me, let me. Let me get him on the screen, okay?
He gave you a thumbs up, Wendy.
I didn't see it. Counselor Schoon, very good. Thank you, sir. Counselor Schoon voted yes. We have, oh, President Mellon?
Yes.
Yes, we have five to zero voting for the variance on, the use variance on eighty-three nineteen Jackson Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will move us to, let me see, I can't see it. Let's see. All right, we have.
This is an accident settlement. What had happened is there was an accident, a fire hydrant was needed to be replaced as a result of an automobile accident. I believe the town manager negotiates negotiated the hydrant to replace it was X dollars. It was an older fire hydrant. The insurance company said, we're only going to pay Y dollars. And according to Resolution sixteen sixty-six, there's an official procedure that we need to follow to accept anything that is less than the original invoice amount. So it reads, if the clerk treasurer recommends a waiver of all or a portion of the delinquent charges to collect the principal balance, he shall submit his recommendation to the town manager for review and evaluation, which I did. The town manager will make a decision to approve, reject, or modify the recommendation of the clerk treasurer and take further action to for collection that he deems necessary and report his action to the town council, which is what the town manager is doing.
Right.
So this is for informational purposes only.
Okay, all right, so no action?
No action needs to be taken, but we will deposit a check for, I believe it's four thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars tomorrow. Four thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars tomorrow. Yay.
Okay, thank you. Brings us up to the portfolio assignment report. I can't see it. All right, so here we have portfolio reports. A new item added to our agenda so that we can hear reports if there is, is something that someone would like to share from the various committees on which they serve. We, this is where we can, where we'll do this. So Steve, do you have any, anything to add for the school board?
I checked with with the school board. The last meeting had a number of just general business items, nothing in particular, of particular note to report to the council this go around.
Thank you. And that's perfectly fine. And you know, if there's nothing to report right now, that's fine. I'll just give everyone that opportunity. Let's see, the Hammond Sanitary, Chuck and or Ken, do either of you have anything to share? Are we still not able to hear Ken?
I was gonna let Ken speak, but he's speaking, but I don't hear him. I have no report from the Hammond Sanitary Board.
Okay. And Ken, I'll try one more time. Can okay, if if you join us, Ken, then, and you have something to say, circle back to it.
Oh, we can hear you now, I think. So try again, Ken.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm hearing everything very loudly, too. The Hammond Sanitary District has been almost secretive in its meetings in the last month or two and has been meeting by Zoom. but not sending Zoom information to non-board members. And I'm a liaison, not a board member.
Okay. All right.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. And while we can hear you for sure, do you have anything to report for the parks?
Yes. The park board and the staff have been undergoing very difficult conversations concerning what to, what to do this summer and what to cancel. And the Munster Pool will be open. It will have hours very different from previous years. It'll have a three-hour session in the morning, a three-hour session in the afternoon with an hour in between so that the staff can sanitize the items that are touched. People will be expected to socially distance themselves and wearing masks, except when they're in the water. The pool is going to be open June tenth? Dustin, is that right?
Eighteenth.
And, okay. And the summer camps have been canceled. And it's, as I said, it's been very difficult trying to offer as much as they can safely and making those hard decisions to cancel.
Okay. Yep. Thank you for that, Ken. All right. Let me see that. Who else do we have here? Wait, I lost my paper. For a safety, Chuck, do you have anything to share?
Yes, if I could just have a minute. During the recent months, there's been a lot of focus and attention on public safety, whether it be at the national, you know, state and even, even local level. I would like to report to the council that the Munster Police Department and Fire Department really has met this challenge over the past months with, with much professionalism, dedication, cooperation, and really a true public servant attitude and culture. The town should be proud of these, these employees and the administrators of these departments who have gone to great lengths to keep our community safe, while at the same time allow for all to express their thoughts and ideas. Thankfully, for the past thirty years, our police department in town has engaged in the community-oriented policing concept that focuses on building ties and working closely with the members of the community. Additionally, since two thousand and eight, our police department has underwent a very detailed and comprehensive program and review to become accredited by CLEA, which is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. This accreditation ensures that our town is being served by a department that, among other goals, has community relationship building and independent review at its core values. Munster is just one of thirteen police departments in the state of Indiana to receive this accreditation. As we move forward, please be assured that the department will continue to work with community groups like the Choice Community Council, the DARE Police School PTO Partnership, and the Munster Crime Watch to further engage our community and meet the challenges of the future. In closing, the Board of Safety and the Police Department will continue their review of their operations and procedures. And as a liaison to the council, I'll, I will work with Chief Shekel and Damon Johnson, the Department Accreditation Officer, to keep the council and the residents of Munster informed and aware of these efforts.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you. And then we have Lake County Solid Waste. That's Steve and/or Ken. Anything exciting happening in the world of garbage and recycling?
Nothing new, and not all the meetings have been held because of the COVID nineteen difficulties.
The, the meetings are typically every other month, so one was skipped and then we did hold one via Zoom. The most recent meeting, going back to business as usual, you know, a sad note is that Cliff Dugan's mother has passed away just in, in the past week. So our condolences and hearts go out to him. He's a lovely man. He was the, yeah, he's the, the director out there.
I, I mentioned this to Dustin, but our, our meetings come across as being very efficient compared to the Solid Waste Board. They have twenty-three members of the board. And at our last meeting, every, every vote, including each section of votes, was a roll call vote.
Whether you were present or not.
Yes, the people who were not present still had their names called. And, you know, it's just, just taking, taking the roll call took a tremendous amount of time with twenty-three board members.
Yes, solid waste.
Do recall that, yes. I served two years on the, on that board. That long roll call.
Yes.
Okay, and can you, do you have anything for Little Cal?
I have met with Dan Repay, but the commission hasn't met since, since I became a council member.
Okay, all right. That's, yes, it's an unusual time, but okay, thank you. And then we have, Andy, did you want to say anything about Munster Civics Foundation? I know that.
The only, the only thing I would mention about that, it's unfortunate that we won't be holding our festivities this year for the Fourth of July, so we're in the process of trying to get our committees up and running to try to get more people involved with the Civic Foundation at this point.
Okay, thank you. Am I missing anyone? Oh, no, I know. I meant, I meant before. I, I have the treasurer, clerk treasurer's report, but am I missing any appointments or liaisons to boards and commissioners?
There's really nothing to report on Plan Commission or BGA either.
Oh, that's right. They, yeah, okay. Or did, I'll give any, you know, Chuck or Steve, if either of you want to say anything about Plan Commission? Because.
No, I have no report.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to.
Likewise, the, the, the most important things come to the council for a vote, nothing in particular right now.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Wendy, for the, what do you have for treasurer's report?
I have, first of all, I am the liaison to the Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, which is called NERC. They have had two board meetings since the beginning of the year, one in person and one virtually. And I share your solid waste pain in that every member had to be voice voted, and it was an exhaustive list. NERC is currently holding a public comment period for the draft changes to the twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-four Transportation Improvement Program, which is a short-range financial and spending plan to use federal transportation funding. Funds may be used for highway transit and non-motorized transportation projects. And for additional information, I encourage you to visit nerc.org. As far as the clerk treasurer's office, we've had numerous residents request paperless water bills, and they would like to set up automatic credit card payments. At, until recently, we did not think that that was possible. However, we have discovered we have an opportunity, and unfortunately, the information did not get to us in time to be on tonight's agenda. So kind of as a, something to look forward to in, on the July sixth meeting, we will present additional information and related costs. And I'm hopeful that you'll recognize both the benefits to the residents and the cost advantage of going to an elective paperless water bill and the automatic credit card payments to the residents. And then I'm sure all of you have been on the edge of your seat waiting to find out where we stand with Census twenty-twenty. And here you go. As of yesterday, which was June fourteenth, the national percentage of completion was sixty-one point four. In Indiana, it was only slightly higher at sixty-five point nine. The town of Munster remains at number seven in the state, and we have an eighty-one point one percent completion rate. Our final completion rate in twenty-ten was eighty-three point four percent. So we're getting close to where we were last year. Again, encourage everyone that you come across, this is important for financial dollars back to the town. So we really want people to complete that census and get an accurate count of the number of residents. It had been talked about to get some park signage, signs, the big sign out saying, don't forget to do your census. And I hope that that happens soon. So that's what's happening in this little corner of the world.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. And then I'll wrap it up with president's report. I just, since this is something that is at the forefront of the world, I just, I just wanted to give a little background here. But certainly, since the death of George Floyd, you know, there's been a renewed discussion regarding the inequity across our country. And in that discussion, there's been a call for cities to review policies and take action to indiscriminate discriminatory treatment. And for the benefit of our newly elected officials, as well as all Munster residents, I just want to highlight an action the previous council took to prohibit discriminatory conduct within our town. So in two thousand and fifteen, there were many residents across our town who formed a group called We Are Munster to support equal human rights for the LGBT community. And the residents approached the town council requesting the body formally adopt a policy stating protections. The, those conversations continued into two thousand and sixteen, which was after a new council took office. And listening and talking to those residents about their views on the equal human rights was one of my first experiences as an elected official. And I and my fellow councilors had numerous conversations with residents and worked with them to form Ordinance sixteen seventy-four, which was the ordinance of the Munster Town Council prohibiting certain discriminatory conduct within, within the town. And although the ordinance originated from a call for equal rights for the LGBT community, the council expanded it with the purpose to protect all individuals regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, gender, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, family or marital status, ancestry, age, and/or veteran status. After much thoughtful discussion and input from various individuals, this ordinance sixteen seventy-four was adopted on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. And I think this ordinance represents Munster's commitment to equity across our community. So I just wanted to share that for those who might not be aware and just to highlight something that we have done in the recent past. So that is it from my corner. And that would bring us to the announcements, which our next meeting, regular town council and redevelopment commission meeting is scheduled for July sixth. And the following would be July twentieth. And that brings us to adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is it Counselor Schoen that made the motion seconded by Counselor Coulteritis?
Aye.
Yes, there's a little bit of overlap there. And to clarify something, the July sixth meeting, we need to know for the public hearing, is that going to be a Zoom meeting or a public meeting? An in-person meeting?
That I will, that actually, we have not discussed that. As far as I know, I don't know if someone else has discussed it. Mr. Westlin, based on your interpretation?
Based on the current governor's orders, you could do either one.
The governor announced that we would be back to normal by July fourth. And this is the sixth, so I wonder if the permission to hold Zoom meetings will end.
That, that's, that's the question, Ken. Right now, the executive orders do not take away the permission to have the Zoom meetings. So I guess stay tuned. That could change. You know, for a while there, it was changing every day, and thankfully, we've had a couple of months now where it hasn't changed every day. Because I was getting tiresome to kind of track that all, but right now, the order is still in place, and he would have to revoke that authority. You know, if you look at the stage five plan, it still has some protections for the COVID crisis. I mean, he says normal, but it's still, and I have, I'm going to have it handy because I refer to it every day. But it's still, you know, remote work being optional, face coverings, sixty-five and older, you know, guidelines and, you know, so the upside is, I have no idea. And we'll have to kind of wait and see. I think you kind of, you may have to put that one by ear a little bit.
One of us is sixty-five or older of the council.
Well, I was going to ask if, well, a couple of questions, and I just don't have it in front of me. So if we were to have it live, one, would we, we would need to limit the number of people who can come in to attend in order? We're not, are we not doing any social distancing at that point?
You're not limited in number, assuming July fourth goes the way they say it's going to go. You wouldn't be limited in number, but you would be limited still by six feet.
Which.
So you would be limited in number because there's only so much square footage in that conference room.
Exactly. So one question would be how to decide, let's say we had a full house. How do you decide who comes in and who doesn't?
Can I make a recommendation that we have staff look at this in the next week and see how valuable, how we can hold, hold a public meeting in the Munster Town Hall? And let's, let's look at all those options. I think it's going to be challenging to do this all right now. But I, I would like to see us have a meeting if we can do it safely. So, but again, I do think there's some things we have to look at.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Yeah. Okay.
And tomorrow's meeting is in, is at the town hall?
It is, it is, since it's an executive session, it's in the, it's limited in its number by nature, and it's in the large conference room.
And we've, I've specifically asked for it to be set up in a large rectangle with plenty of space between the chairs. And then I'll review it before seven tomorrow to be certain that it meets those requirements.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. So we have adjourned. We continue talking, but we have adjourned. So that moves us to our redevelopment commission.
John Castro still with us?
I certainly am. Hello.
Wow. What a patient man.
Yes, no kidding. Okay, so it is, what time? My time, it is eight fifty-three, and I'll call to order the redevelopment commission regular meeting for June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Wendy, have you noted the role or the?
Commissioner Schoen, yes. Commissioner Gardner, yes. Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Coulteritis?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Yes, and our liaison, Mr. Castro. Commissioner, Mr. Castro is also in attendance.
All right. Thank you. This brings us to the public comment. Dustin, did we have any submit, anyone submit questions or comments? Redevelopment commission.
We did not.
Okay, thank you. Moves us to the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as approved, as listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call the role?
Commissioner Gardner made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Coulteritis. Commissioner Schoen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Coulteritis?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero to accept the consent agenda?
Thank you. There is no old business, business, no new business, no reports or announcements, and that brings us to adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a move and a second. I think second, what, motion was by?
Commissioner Coulteritis? Commissioner Tulowitzki made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Coulteritis?
Yes.
Very good.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and we are adjourned at eight fifty-five.
Good evening, everyone. Bye-bye.
Good evening.